Mayor, recording has begun.
Town council meeting. Of all people, I would like, Linda, would you please take role?
Councilmember Goldsmith is not present. Councilmember Trolander?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Would, would everyone please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Counsel, if you have had a moment to look at the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. And we have four sets of minutes. If you have had the opportunity to look at the minutes, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the meeting minutes for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the closed session, for the actual town council meeting as presented.
All right, so I have a motion to accept the fifteenth of August of twenty twenty-three. What do you have?
Yeah, so there is a correction. I apologize.
Okay.
On the presiding officers for the Open Meetings Act, for the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting time five oh two, the correction needs to be noted that for members in favor of going into closed session was not checked off, so that needs to be checked. So I move that we adopt the closed session meeting minutes with corrections and the town council meeting minutes as presented.
All right, thank you very much. So I have a motion on the floor for an amended acceptance of the closed session meeting and the other minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our public comment. If anybody wishes to say anything, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and if you could keep it to three minutes, that would be wonderful. Anybody? All right, moving on. So Chief, can you come on down?
So thanks, Jason. Mayor and counsel, last month, the LaPlata Police Department's Public Safety Cadet, it's members, thank you, attended the Public Safety Cadets National Competition and Training Conference, also known as the Summer Showdown in Gatlinburg, Tennessee. During that week-long event, attendees competed in different events, calling upon different skills that they had learned while attending meetings at their home agency. The skill competition included airsoft firearm challenge, police biking, physical fitness, drill team, response to active shooter, arrest and search, burglary in progress, felony traffic stops, force options, identifying human trafficking, officer rescue, and unknown trouble. During the unknown trouble competition, which was hosted by the Tennessee Valley Authority Police Department, our cadet team, some of them couldn't be here tonight, took second place. It's really important to note that there are hundred, there's well over a hundred teams that participated in these competitions. So our team really shined down there and brings a great sense of pride to our organization. Little bit about the, the Public Safety Cadet Program. It's a mentoring program for young adults, and they want them to learn how to serve their communities by educating them, giving them skills, and helping them with practical experiences through education and training, delivered by their public safety professionals like First Sergeant Posey here, Philip Thompson, and Jordan Madison, who are their advisors. And the overall goal is to help these young folks build character, achieve physical fitness, and respect the rule of law. So tonight, they're here to show off their trophy that they won for responding to an unknown trouble, and I'll turn it over to First Sergeant Posey so he can give you a little bit on these two young men in about the competition.
So I'm extremely proud of these guys. You know, this, this is the first time I won a national trophy in the twelve years that we had the program, so it's really a big, it's a big deal for us. So they worked hard up until they'd been training almost every, every week. We did some joint training with the county as well, and we both shared a, a house together with them, so it was a good bonding time with us in the county as well. And I think it was a good networking thing. They learned a lot, and it had a great time, so.
And the unknown, what was it called?
Unknown trouble.
That was a nine-one-one call, right? And they had to assess the situation and be able to-
Do you want to talk about it a little bit, Brian?
Yeah. So basically, it was a nine-one-one call stating that a male subject stole a, what was it, a toolbox. Then we figured that out, talked to the nine-one-one caller. He gave the information. We later found a gentleman matched the description in the other tenting area, as I would say. He came back with warrants for a gun violation, and then we searched the toolbox to ensure that all of his tools were there, and lo and behold, there was a firearm, so that led down different paths. And so it was basically, that was it, but it was fun to, you know, hit all those checkpoints, I would say. And yeah.
And how did you receive enough points to earn the second place?
It really was based upon, like, what criteria you met, like, if you got the information correct, asked the right questions, did the right things. And also, it's based on time and how you, how quickly you execute it and how correctly you execute it.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. The council would like to present you all with a special recognition. So we're gonna come down here. You guys are gonna come around.
What did you think of Gatlinburg?
I love it.
So the council, the town of LaPlata, the certificate of special recognition to the Public Safety Cadet Unit of Community Leadership. Congratulations on placing second in the hundred teams in the unknown trouble competition at this year's Public Safety Cadets National Competition and Training Conference held in Gatlinburg, Tennessee. Burning this honor is a testament to teamwork, investigative skills, ability to assess the situation, stay calm, and strong leadership. We commend your unit on its very significant accomplishments. So congratulations, and thank you for putting us on the map over there in Tennessee. Good job. One more, do you agree? You have any words?
Thank you.
Good to see you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Have fun for these dogs.
All right, that's always a fun time here. We do have another proclamation. This is an exciting thing that will be happening this weekend, and I I think that I'm going to present it after I read it. So I don't know if you, you know, but a couple of people are gonna come up, right? So this is on Saturday. It's Plays Music on the Porch Day, and I will read the proclamation on this. Whereas Worldwide Play Music on the Porch was first held in twenty fourteen as a grassroots movement to celebrate the universal effect of music and talents and passions of musicians of all kinds. And whereas in twenty twenty-three, musicians in over forty-five countries and more than two thousand locations will participate in Worldwide Play Music on the Porch Day. And whereas the town of LaPlata regularly holds events that are open to the public to encourage residents and non-residents to visit downtown LaPlata for community interaction. And whereas the residents of LaPlata value opportunities to come together as a community and participate in activities that promote the values of living in a small town. And whereas the cooperation of businesses in the town demonstrates the spirit of community that is essential to a high quality of life in LaPlata. And whereas Bird City, Maryland, and Keep LaPlata Beautiful have partnered to provide local musicians the opportunity to perform their music throughout downtown LaPlata and thereby enrich lives by spreading the joy of music. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of LaPlata, do by, do hereby recognize August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, as Play Music on the Porch Day in the town of LaPlata, Maryland, and encourage all residents, businesses, and visitors to celebrate and support the musicians who bring beauty to our lives through music. And this is such a great thing because it is for tourism, it is music, and it, it really features our arts. So I would like, Shannon, and do you have anybody else with you that's?
I'd like to present this, and then I would like you to tell, I'm gonna put you on the spot, which I'm gonna be loved. If you could tell a little bit more about where they're going to be and all that.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
It's all new words. Thank you so much. So it starts on Saturday, ten. It starts on Saturday at ten. It's at Farmer's Market. It's at Train Station, Landin's Ice Cream, Dream Big, of course, Bird City Records. Music, thank you. Yeah, so it's all around, every hour is a different band in a different location. And you start at Farmer's Market and you're going to end? The Caracol. Oh, so it's gonna come all the way over the end. Wonder, do you know what kind of music we'll be playing? It's all over. We have bands, we have just single, like singer-songwriters that do covers, they do original stuff, so it's. That is fantastic. Thank you, and your organizations for bringing this together for our town. It's supposed to be a beautiful day on Saturday, so please come out and support. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is LaPlata Community Foundation Annual Report. Come on down.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. On behalf of the LaPlata Community Foundation, I just wanted to say thanks for allowing us the opportunity to brief on what we've been able to accomplish over the last year. I believe you guys got the information for the grants that we funded over the past year. But first, I did want to call out our board members. As you're probably aware, we had a complete board turnover in the last year, so all of us, as of September of last year, were brand new to the board. So the board includes myself, it includes Melissa Deo from Virginia Partners Bank, Martha, as everybody knows, from the town of LaPlata, and also Renee Curry from the Department of Social Services, who was not able to be here tonight. So when we first started, we found that there was a complete disarray. The process for applications was difficult and perhaps, shall we say, cumbersome, requiring multiple paper copies of information. So I just wanted to mention my appreciation for the foundation board for coming together and revamping the whole application process. We streamlined everything. We put the revised application online so that now it's possible for people who are looking to apply for a foundation grant to fill out the application online, send it electronically, which is a much easier process to do. So I just wanted to say my appreciation for all the hard work of the board in putting that together this year. Now, as you can see, we we approved several grants this year. The first one, of course, was done by the previous board. But the other three grants, the Rocktoberfest Lifestyles and Charles County Public Schools Project Graduation, were approved by us. And especially in light of the last presentation, I just want to say I was really excited about the opportunity for a Rocktoberfest that we were able to provide funding for the arts and music program for Charles County. Music is near and dear to my heart as well. I'm a family of musicians, so I'm delighted that we can also sponsor the arts and music. So all this money, again, has been spent in order to benefit the town of LaPlata, overall students, homeless, music and arts department, and then most recently, the emergency room in Charles Regional Medical Center. Lastly, I just would like to request that perhaps the town council could consider us in mind when doing less next year's budget. It was brought to my attention that we were not on this year's budget, and I believe the foundation does do a considerable amount of good work in the town of LaPlata, so I hope you'll consider re, re-putting us back in the budget for next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the hard work. I'm sure that was in the small fine print when you all signed up, that you were gonna have to overhaul that whole foundation, but it is very important to the town. I will open it up for council.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for you. So where does your funding come from outside of donations from the town of LaPlata?
The town is our current, is currently our single source of, of funding right now.
So do you have plans to identify other funding opportunities?
We will be looking into that over the next few months. We haven't really identified any other sources as of yet.
Are you eligible for grants?
I believe so. I would have to consult our accountant about that, but I believe we are.
All right, good.
Thank you, Dave Jenkins from Ward Four. I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work, and this is a great presentation, and it's good to know you're active, active in the community. Thank you very much, and your board.
Thank you so much, and thank you both for being here, all three of you for being here tonight. All right, that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which would be the chief's monthly report.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Was there any questions about the monthly report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I had two questions. On your monthly council report for Part One Crimes and Case Case Closure Rate, looking at the number of juvenile criminal arrests, are we not having calls for juvenile activity? Because I know we were having issues between the Kent Avenue and the Petuxon Court, so are we not having any issues with juveniles in our, as of now?
Not as frequently as we were, but also remember that in Annapolis, they changed a lot of the juvenile laws, and juvenile thirteen or under cannot be charged with a crime.
But are we having incidences with juveniles thirteen and under?
A few, but nothing to speak of like other jurisdictions are experiencing right now.
Okay, and then my other question is, on the August third traffic stop, typically you'll say to us, if you identify weapons, that you were gonna run them through the state to see if they'd been, or I'm not, maybe it's not the state, but the data, some database to see if they'd been included in a crime or anything like that. You didn't say that with the weapons that were identified on that.
Yeah, that, that night, we run a check, and it's, as, in the report, you know, one of the serial numbers was obliterated, so it's gonna, that'll be sent to the Maryland State Police to see if it can be erased. Within twenty-four hours, we have an MOU with the sheriff's department because they have a NIBIN, NIBIN's, right? Yeah, and they test fire our guns for us. It's a, it's a hundred thousand dollar machine that the sheriff was able to get on a grant, and he graciously allows us so we don't have to take them all the way up to Pikeville for the state police. So they are tested within twenty-four hours, and neither one of these guns that I know of came back with a report of use in another known crime. Now, those ballistics will be put into the NIBIN system, and later, if a round is found, it can be compared to that. But neither one of these guns are going back to the owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dave Jenkins, Ward Four. On that same slide on the traffic stop data, have you seen any, noticing any reduction in speed in terms of car stops or citations or warnings?
It's, it's pretty much, yeah, we don't really track it by speed and whatever, but the vast majority of citations we write are for speeding violations, whether it's a warning or a citation. Each one of our cruisers is equipped with both front and rear radar. We build the cars that way, and so the officers have that ability at any time, and it's moving radar so they can get vehicles. As an old judge in Prince George's County used to say, radar is spelled R-A-D-A-R forward and R-A-D-A-R backwards. So a police officer with radar can get you coming and going, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Director Harrington. Do we have any questions for Director Harrington?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So Director Harrington, for violation notices, that, that was a pretty good number. What, when we say violations, what were we typically seeing in those notices?
So for violation notices, it could be anything from grass to, you know, tall grass to signage to different things like that. Mainly, when you're in the summertime, in this time, it's usually tall grass.
Tall grass. And then I have one other question for you. Chapter one eighty-one, ready for council review? Would the planning commission review that, one eighty-one, or no?
No. They, they're mainly looking at the subdivision chapter and the zoning chapter.
So how will the council review that?
So it's with legislative right now. Once it's ready for it to be presented to the council, we'll bring it forward as a, as an agenda item for review and a comment.
Will we review it before the meeting or during the meeting?
Anticipate. We could have it as a work session item, discussion item, just much as we do a lot of the agenda items, where you will get it in advance to review. And then during a meeting, we will have the opportunity to answer questions of council.
Okay.
And if need be, we can make those adjustments before it comes back to you for consideration of adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Harrington?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Harrington. Just, you, you mentioned that the APFO is still a working draft, so, so if we were to have individual comments, who should we send those to?
You could send them to me.
Okay, and then you, you're still working, which is great, on your draft, the planning commission draft rules and procedures. Will that have any recommendations or reference to ex parte communications?
Yes.
It will?
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Director Stahl, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening. Does anyone have any questions for Director Stahl?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Director Stahl, a hundred and ninety-nine missed utilities, is that within a month?
Yes, ma'am. Things are busy, and we, we, we get, you know, because what happens, and I, I give you a good example. The other day, I was literally furious with Smeco. They have gotten so many now requests that they have outsourced a lot of their locating, so they now have an outside locator doing locations for them, which they used to do in-house. We had a water leak that ran between number one and number two Quailwood Parkway. And so when we were over there getting ready to dig it up, we called in a locate. They came out, both the locator for the communications groups and also the locator for the electric. Of course, we locate for water and sewer, and we were there. They mislocated the electric and did not locate a seven hundred and fifty KVA line. And we, the next day, we actually called in Bob Hardy because we found that the leak was actually under Quailwood Parkway, so we got Hardy Underground to come in and directionally drill the line under there. He called in the locate as well. Owen Hardy and I were standing literally right on the edge, and suddenly, as the drill came under the road, they hit that seven hundred KVA line, and when it did, it blew the dirt everywhere, all over us. It was quite dangerous, and I was literally furious with them because had we been digging with our excavator, it probably would have killed men because it's a great big transmission line. My point being, though, that every single person that's out there on that job, the town of LaPlata has to call a locate in, and on the same job, Hardy Underground had to go and call a separate locate in. And so if there are three or four contractors working on the job, everyone has to locate and have their own clearance for the locates. And with the way we're growing here in town and all the different jobs that are going on, you know, we're, we're extremely busy with locates. I mean, it's, it's a good four or five every day, if not more.
Okay, and my last question is regarding the smart meter RF safety and requesting to opt out of the planned strategy for Clark's Run resident. Can you explain what their concern is?
Their concern was that it was giving off electric waves that could be potentially dangerous to their health.
And what is the alternative for that?
We have a fee that's extensively high because then we have to go out and manually read the meter. And so we're gonna, you know, every time we go out to read, and I, I don't remember the fee off the top of my head, but it's, it's not cheap that they have to pay that fee instead of having it electronically read. And we've tried to explain to them, this is a very small battery. You know, that's why we've had trouble because the batteries have been going dead. This isn't, you know, if they have a flashlight in the house that has two batteries in it, there's probably more electric in the flashlight than there is in the, this is not like an electric meter or things like that. Ours operates off of a battery, and it's a very, very low voltage. And so it, it is challenging to explain, but there are some people who are concerned, and we, we would prefer not to give them an out. But, you know, we didn't want to end up in a legal situation over it, and it was just easier to create a fee that was, you know, not just onerous, but at least we recovered our costs for having to send a man out to the house and, you know, go and read the meter and that kind of thing. And eventually, in order to switch it, the one person that had the problem actually allowed us to switch it, but wants to switch back. And so we will have to get a manual read meter in, and most likely we will take a wire out to a reader head that mounts on the side of the house so that at least we don't have to go into the house because then that requires two men, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. All right, our treasurer, come on down.
Good evening. Any questions?
All right, do we have any questions for our treasurer? Go ahead.
Thank you again for your work on this. The chart where you explained the ARPA project expense report, I'm not sure I remember. What, what is the trial speed revitalization to be facing?
I will have to refer to the town manager on that. I just have this listing, and these are the amounts that were budgeted for each of these projects.
If we don't know what it is, hopefully we haven't spent any money in that.
We have not.
Okay, good.
No, we have not.
Yeah, I think that was originally money appropriated, thinking prior to state highway taking on the Route Six project. So we may need to reappropriate that money away, or, you know, consider alternate uses because, you know, that, that money is on a shot clock, so we will have to spend it. And with state highways' schedule, it will be expired, that ARPA money, ARPA funds will expire before we'll be able to sort of supplement whatever they're doing on Route Six.
And then the Georgia Community Center, a hundred K. So that hasn't been spent yet, and I, and I was telling you, I have another request I have that can talk to us about what they're doing, and what the, I know the town manager will come. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So I'm so I'm looking at the inflows by source and the outflows by source. I've never seen inflows and outflows separated like that. And when I look at it, it looks like we've spent more than we took in. And I'm sure that there was a balance, you know, carryover balance or something that would not look like that, so.
So the inflows are the actual cash we received payments, not necessarily the revenues because that's based on the period earned. And the outflows are the cash that we paid out to vendors and payroll. Again, not necessarily the expense because again, that's based on when the activity actually happened. It could, so the inflows are just, the inflows are cash coming in and the cash going out.
Got you. I totally get that piece, but they're separated. So I don't see the relationship, you know, if maybe there's no relationship in your world.
Really, there isn't because just with the inflows, that's cash and that could be not necessarily, oh, that cash has to be matched with that outflow. It's more the expensive revenues matching with the inflows of the revenues coming in, such as the tax and us providing the services.
Okay.
I can put them together, but it's all, it's not gonna, it's not gonna balance like a balance sheet. It's not gonna do that or the the revenue, expense and revenue reports, those are different. This is just showing what's physically coming and what we physically paid out in that month, in that period.
Right, totally get it. I know what inflows and outflows are, I just didn't understand the separating them typically a person to say property laws or balance sheets so that I can see the relationship. I know that there, you know, rents and concession has nothing to do with parks and regulation, I get that. But inflows somewhere covers outflows and
Yes, but yeah, so what I did here is because we don't have it specifically earmarked for expense, except like a grant, when we get like a grant that we get the cash in, we have to use it for a certain expense. But our tax revenue can be covering, the police department expense can be covering, general administration expense. So there really isn't, all that is, is telling you how much we received from the different sources and how much we paid out for the different functions. I I can do a revenue statement, but it's kind of hard with, I, you've noticed I did June again because of how we're getting the information is so delayed. And when I looked back and ran a report for the same period, there was a big difference. So I'm pushing everything back a month so you guys get more of an accurate number on the actual expenses and revenues coming in. But the inflows and outflows are numerally cash going in, cash going out. There really isn't a relation between the inflows and outflows as far as do they relate to each other? The only time that would happen is like a grant.
And we're not on a pool.
Well, government accounting is a modified accrual method. So like a capital asset for the general government, we would not capitalize that and we would take that expense all at once. Where on the enterprise fund, we depreciate over the period of time for the life of that asset. So it we're, it's a combination of accrual and cash basis on our end, on the government side and accrual basis on the enterprise side.
All right, any other questions? Thank you so much. All right, that brings us to our Director of Legislative Services. Do we have any questions for Director Pitts? None?
You should have brought my laptop and just stayed.
Exactly, well, I do have a comment. Love that number one nominee for best farmer's market in Southern Maryland, so that is huge. So congratulations to you and the committee on that. That has been years in the making, but it is really, has really blossomed. So congratulations to you. And I see that our Bird City certification application has been submitted, any?
B-City.
I mean, B-City.
B-City has been submitted. It had one last piece of information that I did not put in the place she expected it. We should have that done this week.
Madam Mayor, I don't have a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for, you know, pursuing the tag and everything. And I'm glad we will be able to get a little revenue for it. It's not just a total waste, so thank you so much for doing it.
Oh, thank you, ma'am, that was a, it's a fun project and we'll be talking about it in just a bit.
All right, thank you so much. And then our Director of Human Resources is
She is not here this evening, she is out of town.
Okay. Are there any questions that council may have that Mr. Manuel might answer? All right, that'll bring us to matters of council discussion. First on the agenda is the La Plata license plate.
Just bring that down.
No, yeah, bring that down. It's all yours.
So continue on that, Madam Mayor and Council. After Councilwoman Bryant Ward's idea about bringing a custom La Plata license plate, much in the way that Ocean City has a custom plate. We talked with a local artist who happens to be our arts work group chair. And we put together the presentation that you have on attached to the agenda. We did look for, try to develop a graphic that would be, reflect all of the things that the council had come to a consensus on, our La Plata's commitment to environmental issues, but also have an artistic flair to it. And we we think we think we got it. We had it within the limitations that MVA put on the design, so it could only have four colors. And ultimately, the design would be like three by three, three inches by three inches. So it couldn't be super intricate and couldn't have a lot of components. Like I said, I think we, I say we, Shannon got there.
I do have a question. How long will it take? You've already designed it, which love the design. From if we get, I noticed it's a minimum of 25 people have to watch.
Yes, ma'am, and we will be soliciting people as they leave tonight for those first 25.
So 25 people, how long, once you get the 25, would it be to create and manufacture the, I know you're not manufacturing, but what is the timeline from the MDOT? Or M
Did you see a timeframe on that? I, we are the government, so I will say the government does as the government sees fit.
I didn't see a timeline. But we'll be putting it in, chase out.
Assuming the, the council accepts the design as it is.
The other question I have, and this was, I know for historic or vanity plates, as I used to call them in Virginia, every year we would have to pay for our vanity plates if we wanted it to say something. Does this, is this a one and done?
So as far as the the lettering and the numbering, we don't get to pick that. And MVA picks that for us. We can provide a suggested letter, would we have KOB on it? KOB is on it for Keep a Plate of Beautiful.
But yeah, like you said, being the, I don't believe that there's, it reoccurs another fee.
So it's not an annual charge, it's the $10 administrative fee in addition, yeah, so.
Yeah.
As far as we know, yes, but we'll check on that and make sure when we start putting it out to the public to get those 25 signed up.
Okay.
This is what they're committing to.
Yeah.
Just every year, just because you put stickers on it, there's, you know, the sticker was just the same. But it was, it was, now, this has been between 15 and 12 years ago, we did this. And we did create it for diversity and it was, it was quite a process to finally get it to where we could actually give people license. We were getting a lot of reading about, you know, you promise these license tags, blah, 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 this kept taking forever. But it does take a little while.
So we're hoping that, to be a little more optimistic on that because Maryland does put out these plates for hundreds of nonprofits. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward has one. So we feel like they have this process down pretty easy. But again, we are the government, so we'll, we'll see how that goes.
So do we have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Matt Johnson Ward, too. First off, this looks great. I know this is really exciting to incorporate something that is our, you know, one of our principles or our values and kind of share it in a unique way that I haven't seen another Southern Maryland town or location do. So this is another way that our arts community is saying, look, we're different here, we respect our environment, so I really like it. I did want to ask you if if you can speak to, obviously, you know, the town bird, right? But if you could speak to the design at all, as to any distinctive design elements that you thought were important with the limited criteria that you had, just what your vision was with this creation that you have.
Yeah, so, yeah, again, we are limited to four colors and really just trying to, of course, showcase the purple martin as best I could with those limitations. And just the simple greenery, it has no distinct, it's, I just made it up so it doesn't, you know, represent anything, just wanted to be green, beautiful, clean looking and tried to be as simple yet, you know, noticeable on a small scale, so. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
I think you achieved that. Mr. Manuel, do we need a motion to move forward with this or a consensus?
Trying to think.
The ask is to, I have this right here, the ask is to approve a custom license plate program for the town of La Plata using the proposed graphic design. Is that a motion or is that a?
I would say consensus. Yeah, I was good with that.
Director of Legislative Services.
It is my privilege to serve, ma'am.
All right, so I will get a consensus if you are in favor of moving this forward for a custom license plate program for the town of La Plata, please, you know?
Yes.
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 All right, and I am a yes as well, so thank you very much for the vision, the hard work. And we look forward to seeing that next step. Awesome, thank you all. I think you have four right here. I don't know, I'm not pressuring anybody. We're almost there.
Both of them have two parts for household.
Actually, we have a few more. There you go, so we're good. All right, next on the agenda is the Mary Ball Sewer Pump Station Pump Purchase Recommendation. Director Stahl, come on up. You can sit if you want or you can stand, either one.
I've got two in a row.
There you go.
Mayor, as you noticed on the ARPA funding, we have $1 million of ARPA funding allocated towards pump station upgrades. You have already voted on the three upgrades at Clark's Run, Putoxin Court, and Dig Circle. And the big one, of course, is Mary Ball Pump Station. There are two parts to Mary Ball Pump Station. There is a current pump station there now that we're utilizing. And there is an old one where we left it in place. And there's a force main that goes from that. The force main for the one that we're using today goes out to 301 and goes straight down to the plant. The other one actually goes back to Washington Avenue. As you can understand, everything on the north side of La Plata from Mary Ball, which is located right on the northbound McDonald's, right back behind the northbound McDonald's. Everything north of that basically flows to Mary Ball. And then it pumps out to 301. And then gravity flows down from about Chesapeake Street on down to the plant on 301. With the growth of the new apartment project that is located behind the Aldi and everything up there, they are going to build a new pump station located in front of the old Enterprise Rent-A-Car, which is on Charles McPherson's property that has been annexed into town. So they're building the pump station there and everything from that apartment project will then flow down to that project. We have applied for a permit from the state to upgrade our Mary Ball Pump Station because that new pump station that's going in on Charles's property is going to pump to Mary Ball. So in order for those apartments to become operational, we need to upgrade the current Mary Ball Pump Station with new pumps and new electric. The sad thing was, we both applied at similar, similar times, but they got their permit first and we're still waiting. So I can't put this out to bid until I get the permit from MDE for the construction of that. I'm somewhat concerned with the timeline and ensuring that when they're ready to get their use and occupancy permit, that I have the ability to pump sewer. And with one of the lead times for these pumps being fairly long, they're 12 to 16 week lead times generally because they have to come from Sweden. So it is something that I would like to go ahead and purchase the pumps. And we will just include that as that the town already has the pumps. And whoever the contractor will be that we hire to build the upgrade of the Mary Ball Pump Station, we will have them put the pumps that we're purchasing in the, in that pump station for us.
Is it a possibility that you would not get approval?
I would say no. We're not, it, there may be technical back and forth. We haven't had any technical back and forth. There's already a pump station there and we're wanting to upgrade it. They usually with the private sector, it's hard to believe. They, they, because they're getting paid by the private, they don't charge a fee to us as government. Sometimes our permitting takes longer because they're not generating revenue associated with such. So it does take a little bit. We're very hopeful that this happens, but I do want to get, because it's going to take us some time. Even when we go through the procurement process, it's going to take us a little while to go through the procurement process. And we would like to be able to go ahead and make sure that we get these pumps on order because they're such a long lead time item, just so that we don't become the holdup on the, when they're ready to open the apartments. And I believe the last time I talked to them, they're still looking at April of next year is what I'm hearing.
Questions from council, this matter? Go ahead.
Thank you. Maybe, maybe my memory is failing. Wasn't there another project at Mary Ball to replace a pump earlier or something, or am I?
They, we did, we had, we have purchased, we were going to put two new pumps in Mary Ball. The current Mary Ball. But what we've done is those two pumps will actually go in the next phase of Mary Ball. So we have been limping along with the pumps that we have. We purchased their replacements, but we haven't actually put them into that wet well yet because we'd like to keep them for the next Mary Ball Pump Station, which as we continue to grow up on that northern end, you know, if Magnolia Gardens comes online, if Drew Oh my God, Haverilla, if he, if he starts his project, I mean, there are a number of projects. And we're always kind of trying to be aware of when people are going to start and move things forward. Right now, we could operate with the design that we have with the one pump station for now. But we will have to build that second pump station as the EDUs on that northern end increase, so.
And this would be funded by ARPA?
These, these pumps purchases would be part of the ARPA funding. In the original budget, we had $500,000 for Mary Ball. And we had four smaller pump stations, of which we are spending about $375,000. We decided not to upgrade the King's Grant Pump Station at this point and save that 125. So we have about $625,000 for that Mary Ball upgrade. However, However, Generation Properties, which is Mr. Rick Bailey's company, is paying $100,000 towards that Mary Ball upgrade as well. And then if Magnolia Gardens comes online, they're also contributing to that construction. So we have a sizable amount of money for this first upgrade. With the second upgrade, we would be using major facility fees to do the second upgrade in that. But the developers are contributing based on their percentage. We're doing the percentage of the existing flow. They're paying their percentage based on the new flow that's coming into the pump station. So they're, they're paying their portion.
Thank you.
Triumph is Charles McPherson's group that has the, the old Mitchell Supply property there. And so they're part of the, it was very sad. They were working together, and then the deal fell apart. And then I got involved, and we put the deal back together again. And so now the pump station is going back to its original location down in the very front of the project. And that way, it will sewer both Charles's property and the Generation Property.
And Triumph is giving $100,000 towards.
That partnership is giving $100,000 towards the construction.
25,000 is coming out of our funds.
Out of ARPA funding, yes, ma'am, 625.
Oh, I thought 25,000 was coming from us.
Oh, no, 620.
I saw 600, and then I saw 100, and then I thought I saw 25,000 was left to be paid out of.
The, the original budget was 500,000 for Mary Ball upgrade.
Right.
And then we added the 125 that was originally scheduled for King's Grant. And then there was the, the 100,000 that Generation Properties was going to contribute. And then there was, and it was all based on individual flows is how we divided everything.
But your memo says the remaining 25,000 from pump stations in general.
That's correct. The estimate was, there was a total of 750,000 for the construction of the, the pump station, and the additional 25,000 would come out of our operating budget. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries.
So we're looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation? Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
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 All right, me as well, and next one that you have?
Well, actually, it was very interesting. We had been trying to purchase, and as you know, some vehicle purchases have been tough, and trying to get vehicles. At the last meeting, Director Harrington actually sparked my attention because we had tried to get the Mavericks, the Ford Maverick vehicles for our, our employees in the FY '23 year, and we couldn't even order them. So it did turn out that as soon as they let the, the new 24s loose, that we can order vehicles. So I'm coming to you tonight to purchase two new Ford Maverick vehicles, the same as what we purchased for the inspections Department. And we want to do that for our inspector and one of our operators to be able to use those vehicles. It will then allow us to be able to take the heavier duty vehicles and use them for the heavier jobs and the vehicles that we don't need that. But these vehicles are also all-wheel drive, so they're, they are able to go in and out of job sites and that kind of thing as well. So we're looking forward to that same pricing that you saw before. So it's not an unusual scenario, fairly inexpensive vehicles. So we were, we were happy with that, and we'd like to order two of them. And we will be using vehicle reserve monies that we've saved, so this is cash.
Questions from council?
Question, but I appreciate the fact that you thought to use the smaller vehicles. That makes perfect sense to me, so thank you.
I'd say, Councilwoman, the one thing, we do have to buy a lot of larger vehicles because we have to have a number of them plowing snow. But for those where you're just running mileage out over the road and things, as long as we have enough to plow snow with and to make sure that we have the, the amount of vehicles that we need to plow snow, then we're fine. But in this case, we felt it was very good to just get some better mileage vehicles and also some smaller vehicles.
Yes, hey, thank you, Director Stahl, Matt Traulander Ward, too. So if I'm understanding this correctly, they're not replacing older vehicles. They're just kind of diversifying our fleet, so to speak, so as to not.
We will be taking, at this point, the plan is to utilize, we're going to replace vehicles. We're trying to take James Brown's vehicle, he has an F-250. He would be getting the one Maverick, and then his F-250 will actually go to our, our road crew out at the wastewater treatment plant. So they would be utilizing the F-250 to go around and do maintenance on our pump stations and wells every day. And the other vehicle will go to our inspector, and his vehicle will be utilized by our maintenance crew. We would take the Pickup 26, which is currently utilized by the road crew, and it's a 2007 Chevrolet. And we would be replacing, we would be putting that as a surplus vehicle at this point is the plan. We're looking at which other vehicle we would surplus. We still have a lot of much older vehicles in the fleet that we're trying to. But F Pickup 26 is one that we've definitely identified as one that we would be getting rid of when we get these in.
Do you anticipate needing to replace any other vehicles short term? I mean, I know this came about, you were already looking, Director Harrington identified a deal, so to speak. But what are you looking at as far as the future? Because, I mean, 2007, that can't be useful too much longer, I would, I would guess, depending on how much we're using it.
We're, one of the other vehicles, most of our, we, we still have quite a few vehicles in the early 2000s. So we are looking at those. Most of those vehicles, we don't run very often. We have to utilize them as spares and things like that. So we utilize a lot of the older vehicles as spares. But we have some early 2000 Crown Victorias that we utilize. We still have a Ford Explorer that's a 2005 that was a reuse of a police car that we, we utilize every day. And so we are working on a plan to keep upgrading. Our challenges have been that we also have been adding employees and, and need other vehicles for them to get around in. And so it's, it has been a challenge to be able to not only replace the fleet, but also enlarge the fleet at the same time. And so that's why I say we, we do plan to replace Pickup 26 because it is a, it is a maintenance challenge for us. But we're also trying to increase the fleet at the same time because we've increased employees. And so it's, it's a challenge either way, and we're working through that. But our, our vehicle costs are down. We still have, I think, last time, Corina, it was, we still have about 600 and some thousand vehicle reserved at this point, something like that. I mean, we still, we still have, in, in our situation, we, we don't generally spend operating monies. We take expense all along, and we've saved the cash so that we can utilize it as we need. And we still have a, you know, a fairly large amount of cash in the vehicle reserve. And so we're not, we're not out, you know, spending operating funds out of the budget right now.
So I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so we'll see this in just a bit. Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda is, it's all you, Mr. Manuel.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Staff is looking from the council this evening, some sort of consensus on continuing to direct the town attorney and the town staff to work to prepare a Stagecoach Crossing Infrastructure and Allocation Agreement. So we're trying to get the will of council, as it is to, as I said, continue to work with staff, legal counsel, and the developer to negotiate this agreement.
Thank you, I know this has been a long time in the making, and I know that the attorneys will work diligently to make sure it is equitable and, and fair across the board. And I'm going to look for a consensus to move this, to give direction to the, to the town manager, if there are. I'll entertain, I guess, a question, if you have any questions for Mr. Manuel to begin with.
I do, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I, I, I'm still a little bit perplexed. I, so there's been discussions of an agreement for a number of years, and that's great. So I'm, I'm, why, why does it need us to have a consensus to move forward on that?
I think we're just trying to get a consensus that the council will still entertain this agreement. We don't want to continue to use staff time and legal fees for the developer if it's going to be dead on arrival. So I think the intent is to, in good faith, for the town to get an understanding from the council just to that, that we are continuing to negotiate in good faith, and we are trying to come to an agreement.
Okay, I, I guess I see that, but again, I, but, when, but we have no copy or we have no draft to look at, so I guess I'm.
Yeah, we're not asking you to approve an agreement. We're asking you to provide us direction with whether you want us to continue down this path. If, which, you know, at a certain time, we anticipate there being an agreement to come back to council with a staff recommendation for your consideration. We're just not there yet. We've, you know, been to, working on this agreement for a bit of time, but we just want to make sure that we're not, as I said, bringing something to you that's not going to be, you know, treated with, you know, appropriate. I don't want to get myself in trouble, but, you know, we don't want to, you know, go down a path that we're going, the end game's going to be that it's going to be looked at with, and not giving proper consideration as to the fairness of the, the agreement.
All right, so I'm looking for a consensus to direct the town attorney, I mean, to direct the town manager to consult with the town attorney and work out an agreement. Councilman Chollinger?
Work out an agreement for us to review.
Correct, correct.
Understood, I, I am in support of that.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Chollinger, I mean, Jenkins?
Yes, I would just echo Councilman Chollinger's comment, and also that this does not necessarily commit us to any kind of capacity which we do not necessarily control in the future. That would be my only concern.
Well, so thank you very much. You have your, your direction on how to, to move forward with Stagecoach. All right, that brings us to legislation. And thank you to their attorney and the developers for being here this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Ordinance 23-17, Speed Monitoring Systems for the Second Reading and Consideration for Adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you stated, it's for consideration of adoption. An ordinance concerning speed monitoring system for the purpose of amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Town of La Plata to add provisions to address the implementation of speed monitoring systems pursuant to state law.
Do I have a motion to accept Ordinance 23-17 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept Ordinance 23-17, Speed Monitoring Systems as presented.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to Resolution 23-32.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, this is for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Pump Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town, authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract for the purchase and installation of submersible pumps at the Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-32 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-32 as presented for the Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Pump Purchase.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
My second is motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to our final piece of legislation for tonight, which is Resolution 23-33 for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Resolution concerning Operations Department Vehicle Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement. Of utility vehicles for the Operations Department and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-33 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 23-23, Resolution Concerning Operations Department Vehicle Purchase as presented.
Could you amend that to 23-33?
I said 23-33.
Oh, I heard 23-23. So 23, thank you. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-33. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any, there's no nays, motion carries. Brings us to our commission reports. Councilman Chollinger?
No report.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
No report.
Councilman Jenkins?
Just a update, the Tri-County Council's for Southern Maryland's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory, Infrastructure Advisory Committee, at which I'm the chair this year, is our next quarterly meeting will be September 14th. Director Harrington has made presentations before us before, and we're working on an, an agenda, but we're going to be hopefully talking about creating a mapping GIS system where we can map all the projects in Southern Maryland for all three counties as a regional organization. And then perhaps then begin to do some kind of a gap analysis where other sidewalks and/or pedestrian bicycle paths are needed, and then do a regional plan. I know that was done a number of years ago when I worked there. So I think it's time to update it and provide a, a new report. And then also hopefully begins a better campaign to educate folks about the benefits of hiking and biking and cycling and sidewalk safety and pedestrian safety. Thank you.
This Friday, Splash Inn will officially open. They have a ribbon cutting at 1:30. All council are invited to attend. On Friday as well is our last concert, and we have Bobby McKees from MGM coming, for National Harbor, I should say, coming to entertain us. Saturday, August 26th, we have the Kent Avenue, the annual Kent Avenue Block Party from 12 to 3. And then we also have, as, as we have proclaimed, Play Music on the Porch Day from, on Saturday, August 26th, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. The, on Monday, August 29th is when school starts. So we've got school in session, so we all want to be aware of the, the buses and don't go around the buses when they are stopped. And then I would like to publicly thank Colleen for another successful kids program and the Friday night concerts. I have had more people stop me and compliment not only Colleen for the, the kids program, but the Friday night concerts. So kudos to her, did a great, great job. And then also the Hospital Foundation is having their 26th Annual Autumn Wine Tasting Event on September 9th from 4 to 9 p.m. That is my report. We do have a reason to go into closed session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to go into closed session. If anyone's so moved.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we can, can, my journey going to closed session? I don't know what else to add.
Based on.
No, I can't memorize.
How about, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to go into closed. I make a motion to go into closed session immediately following this meeting based on the statutory authority to close session, 3-305B3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related to the acquisition. The topic is acquisition of property for municipal facilities or infrastructure and town improvements in economic development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call will be whether you are going, in favor of going into closed session or not. Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mayor James is yes as well. And I move to adjourn this meeting at 7:10 p.m. Thank you all for coming.